Welcome to Perspectives Online and also on air from WFSU Public Media. I'm Tom Planting. In this program, using the Zoom platform that we all know and love, was pre-recorded on Thursday, September 24th for playback on Tuesday, September 29th. The show to appear on both WFSU FM and the WFSU Public Media Facebook page all at the same time. This is the third in our series of political perspectives here in the run-up to the November 3rd general election in Leon County. And our conversations are including the candidates for several offices, including two Leon County Commission contests, one Tallahassee City Commission race. We're also going to get into that local referendum on a proposed Children's Council for Leon County. And we'll yak a little bit about that in the course of this next hour to come too, because both of our candidates here, I'm sure will have some interesting perspectives, get that, about that particular issue. Today's political perspectives features the two candidates for the Leon County Board of County Commissioners. This is the seat representing the Residence of District Four that encompasses the northeast part of the county roughly. And since 2006, the Commissioner representing the district has been Brian Deloge this election for the first time in a dozen years. Also features the challenger, and he is Brian Welch, a 13-year veteran teacher at Childs High School. We'll start off giving each candidate a few minutes to introduce themselves and talk about their background, unique qualifications, all that. And we want them to really make the case for what makes them the preferred person to do the job. And after that, we'll get into some more specific kinds of county topics that will be of interest to everyone. And although we don't follow strict time limits as far as statements are concerned, you know, I'll jump in in case anyone decides to go on a 15-minute diatribe or that sort of thing. So we'll try to keep it short and sweet. In advance of the program, we did hold a random drawing for who will start us off. The name that came up was Brian Welch. So please, Brian, if you would, talk about your background and how that contributes to your qualifications for the job of Leon County Commissioner representing District Four all year, sir.
Well, thank you, Tom. It's a pleasure to be here on the show with you. I've listened to so many times and you know, that familiar voice yours. So I'm honored to be here. My name is Brian Welch, and I am a school teacher at Childs High School. I've been there since 2006, 2007. So this is my 14th year in the classroom. I teach Social Studies, World History, and Advanced Placement Human Geography. I taught some US history in there and some Advanced Placement World History. I have lived in northeast Tallahassee since 1998. I moved here from Jackson, Mississippi, the day after I graduated high school to go to college. And I went to TCC for two years, and then I went to FSU because my goal in life as a young man was to be a Knoll. And so I was able to graduate from FSU, and then I got a master's degree from FSU in 2003. And then I got another master's degree in 2016 from University of West Florida. I met my wife at the Kalaran Country Club about a day after I moved to Tallahassee, actually. And she was my girlfriend at the time. Got a job at the Kalaran Country Club, worked there on off all the way through college, and ended up marrying my wife, Kim, at the Kalaran Country Club. We have three beautiful children, Chloe, Cameron, and Carter, all with Cs. I tell people, you know, if we had a fourth child, we would have named it cliche jokingly. That was not on purpose that we did that. It just how worked out. My kids go to the public schools in the northeast. I've got one at Childs with me, and I've got a middle schooler at Mottford, and my son, the youngest, is at Roberts Elementary School. I've lived all over northeast Tallahassee, Kalaran Estates, Kalaran Acres, Kalaran Lakes, now live up off Centerville Road in the Centerville Conservation Community. I decided to run for this seat in June. Well, I filed in June of 2019. I decided about six months before that, I started having conversations in early 2019. Felt like I had committed myself to public service as a school teacher for 14 years, and I work every day in the classroom with young people whose families all live in northeast Tallahassee. And I felt like that it was time for a change and time for a fresh perspective. And the voters in northeast Tallahassee haven't really had a choice in quite a while about who would be their representative on the county commission. And I felt like it was just a furtherance of my commitment to service in the community. And I'm looking forward to the opportunities that it's providing for our community and for me to further that service.
Thank you, Mr. Welch. Let's turn things over now for some introductory comments to the incumbent, Brian Deloge. Go ahead, Brian.
Thanks, Tom. Appreciate you having us on here this afternoon. So I'm Brian Deloge. I'm your current Leon County Commissioner for District Four. I was born in Tallahassee. I was born in 1959 in Tallahassee Memorial. I moved to Bradfordville in 1985, and I have lived in the northeast part of town for all of my adult life. My parents still live in the house I grew up in, in Benton Hills, which is 55 years, I guess they've been there. I have got what I would consider kind of a broad brush of experience. I'm a Leon High School grad, a Florida State grad. I started a small business here in town, became an INC 500 business, sold that about six or eight years ago. Spent a decade at IBM. So I think I have a wealth of business experience. The county is about a $280 million budget, so you have to have some ability to deal with a fairly large and complex organization. And I feel like I walked into this job 14 years ago and had little or no public sector or government experience. Well, now I find I have been chairman, I'm the current chairman of the county. I've been chairman twice. I was president of our state association representing 67 counties and traveled all over the state and testified in front of legislature numerous times. I was the president of the National Association of Counties and got a chance to literally travel to just about every state in the country. And I'd like to stop there and just say, there's been some criticism of me being out of town. I will tell you, I phoned in for the overwhelming majority of the commission meetings. And I represented 3,069 counties. I was in the White House under the Obama administration and the Trump administration, probably 10 or 15 times apiece. From a local government standpoint, I would say I have a kind of a wealth of experience. And then I've got the relationships here in the community, whether it be the city commission, the county commission, the school board, Florida State Fan U, FSU. You know, I've had a chance to work with the leadership over the years, and I think it's important for us at this point that you have the ability to kind of move around. And I think I've got a proven track record. The business that the county budget is actually smaller than the proposed budget that was online when I first walked in the door 14 years ago. We have less employees and we've never had a layoff. I will tell you, we have done more with less over the years, and I'm real proud of what we've done. I've delivered 40-plus million dollars worth of infrastructure improvements to the northeast part of town. I love Tallahassee. The reason I do this, similar to Brian, which is, you know, I raised my kids here. I grew up here, and this is my way of giving back. And it's been a great community to me, and I like to continue to serve. And that's me. Thanks, Tom.
Okay. I got a couple of individual questions. And Mr. Welch, if I could start with you here. You said in your introductory comments that you thought, hey, fresh approach, maybe time for a change, that thing. But let's get a little bit more specific here. What would you do that Mr. Deloge is not currently doing? And how could you do it maybe better?
Yeah, I appreciate that question, Tom. I think that Mr. Deloge, you know, has done a good job in the sort of early segment of his tenure. I think over the previous most recent years, there are some issues that have come up. Honestly, one of the first things that got me thinking about doing this was the Northeast Park. Mr. Deloge, you know, admittedly wanted to build that park in 2006, and we still don't have that park. My 14-year-old daughter's never had an opportunity to play baseball in a park in northeast Tallahassee. And it's just something that we desperately need. And so for me, those kinds of things sort of shine a light on bigger issues throughout northeast Tallahassee when it comes to recreational infrastructure, and then you can get into transportation infrastructure. And I've said repeatedly that development issues and concerns in northeast Tallahassee really have taken center stage in terms of how are we growing in northeast Tallahassee? How are we allowing growth? How are we regulating growth? You know, we've got to provide balance for our community when it comes to growing. Northeast Tallahassee can't continue to bear all the burden of all the residential growth in the county. Now, I get it that we have good schools in northeast Tallahassee, and that kind of drives growth and development. But if we're going to continue to push growth into the northeast, where I live, work, and play, and drive the roads every day, we've got to provide the infrastructure. I mean, the community center in Bradfordville is a 400-square-foot, 135-year-old schoolhouse. It's patently inadequate for the services and the community organizations that want to use it. And so I think that it is natural for people who've been in positions a long time to kind of take their eye off the ball, to lose focus, and not necessarily provide the attention to detail that folks in the community deserve. And so for me, I saw it as an opportunity to provide a fresh perspective, provide a fresh level of energy, and perhaps try and prioritize those kinds of infrastructure improvements. And then generally just advocacy for the community in general that is impacted so heavily by the growth and the pressures of Tallahassee's growing, you know, population. And then certainly, when you look at the Walani development, I live on North Centerville Road, and that greatly concerns me because I will, again, be heavily impacted by it. So my family, I have young children all in the schools. We want parks to play in. We want ball fields to play on. And we just don't currently have a lot of access to that stuff. And there's really no excuse why we shouldn't get it. We deserve that kind of stuff in the northeast just as much as anybody else in the community. And I want to ensure that northeast Tallahassee's community is kind of woven into the larger fabric of the county.
All right. Now, I want to also give Mr. Deloge a chance to respond to some of those specific proposals that you just made there. But first, a question, and we know that both city and county commission seats are nonpartisan here in Tallahassee and Leon County, but because of the hyper-partisan nature of our politics on a national level. Brian, I have seen, and I'm sure you have too, a lot of, should we say, hesitancy expressed in social media. You are registered Republican. Make no bones about that, absolutely. But you find yourself in a position of being in a county that is two-to-one Democratic, but we have a legislature and a governor who are Republican. You kind of have a narrow tap dance right there. And I see some people saying, oh, don't go for Deloge. He is, he's another Trumper. He's another one of those guys. How do you do that tap dance and make yourself a commissioner for everyone, at least in District Four?
All right. So two questions, Tom. Let me answer yours first. So I started Village Square 15 years ago on this premise, which is, you know, how do you have a civil debate about the facts when you come to the world with a different set of experiences? So, you know, we are all the product of the way we're raised, the people we know, the schools we attended, and the experiences we've had. That's the lens we all see the world through. And because I see the world differently than somebody else, it doesn't make me good or them bad, or even us right or wrong, as long as you're dealing with the facts. And I have found repeatedly at the local level that frankly, there is no room for partisan politics. Certainly, I'm a business owner, and I understand what it takes to drive a business and to hire and fire people, and I understand all of those. But partisan politics has little or no place at local politics. Stormwater doesn't know party lines. You know, we have to figure out how to have that discussion. And I'm real proud of what we've done at Village Square. We're in Pinellas and Broward, and Kansas, and California, and Pennsylvania, and Utah. And it's, how do you have a civil conversation on a tough issue and bring it forward? We do race relations, energy issues, pick a topic that tends to see people get really polarized. We did one years ago when the amendments that were coming out, if you remember, we had 10 or 12 amendments on the ballot, and they were very confusing. And two of them were pro-life, pro-choice. And we had the head of Planned Parenthood and the head of the Catholic Conference for the State of Florida in front of 300 people talking about why this particular thing was good or bad. Nobody's going to change their mind. Let's face it, pro-life, pro-choice is not the kind of thing you just dance back and forth. But what happened was people said, for the first time, I understand why somebody thinks that way. And there's a little bit of respect, and there's a little bit of knowledge, and there's a little bit of the ability just to look through the lens that the other person sees it. So you're right, it has been an interesting dance. And I don't, you know, when people ask, you know, are you a Republican? I said, that's the way I register. I certainly don't vote that way consistently. I vote for the character of the person that's in the office. So that's, I don't know if that answers that question, Tom. And then I'll back up for a minute, and I'll kind of respond to some of Brian's comments. So we do have a northeast park. We bought 100 acres off of Childs, off of Proctor Road on the Thomasville side, and we've got about $8 to $9 million in blueprint to develop that. I will tell you that the northeast, when I moved to Bradfordville in 1985, it was a two-lane road. We had a Singh store and a Moby Dick's, the only restaurant out there. And it was in the middle of nowhere. I mean, it was, for a lot of people, might as well have been Thomasville. Well, that's certainly not the case now. But what's happened in the last 40 years is you've had unchecked development. And most of this, I mean, frankly, 80% of it was prior to my coming onboard. Kalaran Lakes, we would never allow to be built without the infrastructure to support it. We've got 4,000 homes in Kalaran Lakes on a two-lane road. But it's been there for 25 or 30 years, so we're backpedaling to try and put the infrastructure in place. Kalaran, a little bit of the same, Summer Brook, Golden Eagle, you start, go down the list. It is the most desirable part of town, and it is where people want to live, as Brian pointed out, because the schools are great, and the economy, I mean, it's a good part of town to live in. So my job for the last 14 years has been to try and backfill some of those things, call them sins of my predecessors, but it's basically, you know, hindsight's 20/20. We can look at Kalaran Lakes now and say, should've, would've, could've. But at the time, the owner had property rights, and he wanted to make a development, and it was out in what was considered kind of the country. And we learned some hard lessons. Today, we would never allow that to go forward as it did. So widening of Bannerman, which we are doing, we bought the northeast park. Actually, you know, we've got a couple of new parks coming online in Kalaran here soon. We've got a dog park. We've got, frankly, I think we've done a pretty good job with what we've been handed. Certainly, there's lots of room for improvement, and I've got a lot of plans on what I think we can do going forward.
Okay. Before we go back to Mr. Welch, your thoughts on the Walani plantation? That has riled more feathers than just about anything I've seen in the past 15 years.
Okay, that's a great question. So if you go back and look at the way this started, there, 30 years ago, the city signed a development agreement with the owners of the Walani plantation. There, let's start with, there is no developer in sight right now. Okay? Right now, you have basically landowners that have owned this property for 100 years that want to do the right thing. You've got almost 3,000 acres that are outside of the urban service area but inside the city limits. And the planners looked at this a year ago and said, we need to correct this. This needs, and so we, in September of last year, started advertising and noticing people that we need to have a discussion about this because we're going to expand the urban service area, which we don't do lightly. When COVID started February, March, everybody suddenly got excited and said, we're not getting a chance to have public input. So we stopped, and we had 11 different charrettes invited the public in. Frankly, I give staff a lot of credit. They really jumped through hoops to accommodate. And then we have a workshop coming up in a couple of weeks to talk about it further. The family's trying to make plans, and I will tell you, there's only two master plan developments in all of Leon County. That's Southwood and Canopy. And if we want to repeat what's happened in the northeast part of town, which is Kalaran, Kalaran Lakes, Golden Eagle, Hoxbottom, all which is a little bit palmetto, and we are backpedaling to try and put the infrastructure in, we need to master plan. And the family wants to work with us on this, and it's a chance to do that. I will also tell you, the largest single economic driver today in our community is Canopy. 600 people show up every morning. These are roofers, contractors, plumbers, electricians, cement guys. And that's what they will be doing for the next 10 years, 15 years. Walani represents 15 years plus out before it even starts. If, in fact, they ever sell the property. There's no developer even on the table right now. But what we need to be able to do is do the planning now with the owners so that we can make sure that the trails and the parks and the infrastructure all maps out and meets the needs of the community.
Okay. Thank you, Brian Welch. Your thoughts on that, since you had brought up Walani and some of the other developments that are going on there? Are we taking the right approach, or do you have a better idea, do you think?
Well, I mean, frankly, I think it's, you know, I think we have to own the fact that Mr. Deloge has been in office for 14 years of the 40 years that he claims development has been unchecked. And we allowed a two-lane road to be built into Kalaran Lakes, but we've had a two-lane road on Bannerman Road for a long time. And yet, if you look at it right now, we've got developments going in all over the place near that Bull Heathley intersection. And so I think it's a little disingenuous to sort of separate yourself from that when you have overseen a large part of the development along Bannerman Road, specifically the Residential Shopping Center, and now another, I'm sorry, the Commercial Shopping Center, and now another Residential Shopping Center. And I'm not, again, I'm not anti-development. I agree with Mr. Deloge. I know it's an economic driver, and I know it's good for the community at large, but there has to be balance. If you look at the Canopy development, that did not start off well. Okay? There was a huge clear cut of trees that caused a pond to overflow and create stormwater issues and sewer issues for the communities along Centerville Road that border that. And so the perception amongst folks in northeast Tallahassee is that we're bending over backwards to accommodate developers or landowners at the expense of established communities that exist along those transportation corridors that we acknowledge are congested, that we have a lot of traffic in. If you talk about the northeast park, yeah, that's great. It's a passive park. It's 100 acres of trails. My kid needs a ball field to play on. My eight-year-old son has to play baseball in the outfield at Roberts Elementary School with a backstop and a porta potty. And that's not acceptable. And that's not the city's fault. They bring a program out to Roberts Elementary School, and it's not the school district's fault. They let the city use the school district's facilities. We don't have a park in northeast Tallahassee for kids to play ball at. Meridian Park is not in District Four, even though it's on the border. But you go there on a Tuesday night or a Thursday night during ball seasons, and it's, you can't get in and out of it because of the traffic. You have to walk 200 yards to get to the bathroom, and you're fortunate that you even have a bathroom, and it's not a porta john. So I think that some of those arguments are a little disingenuous, and I think that it's fair to criticize Mr. Deloge for the way that development has played out in northeast Tallahassee. And then when you talk about Walani, Walani is going to happen. I have said vocally that I would have supported the COOP Plan Amendments just on their face. But the process by which we've transmitted the COOP Plan Amendments, I think it's fair to say is suspect. We shouldn't do land use planning based on the needs of a family's estate planning. Land use planning should be done to the benefit of the community at large, and there certainly should be balance given to the impacts that that development and that planning is going to have on people who live along those corridors. So I think Walani is, it's, I think people are fair, it's fair for people to criticize the processes that have gone on in Walani. And I think if you live on Centerville Road corridor, like I do, you have a legitimate concern if you look at the Bannerman Road corridor and just development along Thomasville Road in general, especially over the past 15 years. We've had, we acknowledge we've had all this growth, that it used to just be a two-lane road. I remember when it was a two-lane road out to Bradfordville with the blinking red light. And you look at that, and it was, it was a little rural and a little bucolic, and now look at it, it looks like Orlando or Atlanta. And that is not what we really signed up for northeast Tallahassee. So I think that the criticisms are fair. I think Walani, we really need engagement. We need advocacy. We need somebody that's going to speak for those residents and not just sort of acquiesce to every development interest or every landowner interest along the way. Yes, we need to develop Walani. We, it's going to happen, but it has to be done with balance, and it has to be done adequately and appropriately.
The two contenders for Leon County Board of County Commissioners, District Four, the challenger we just heard from, Brian Welch, the incumbent, Brian Deloge. More on that to come. Some dates to keep in mind here as we just bear in on that general election on November 3rd. Vote by mail ballots are now in the mail. They are going out to those voters who have requested them. I know I just got an email from Mark Early today. He said, hey, your ballot is in the mail. Talk about customer service. Deadline for voter registration is October 5th. Early voting will kick off October 19th with those early voting locations listed on the Supervisor of Elections website. And the general election, Tuesday, November 3rd. Speaking of development, now whoever wins this contest here for District Four will represent that high-growth, high-return area of Leon County. But there is accelerating discussion concerning other parts of the county that do not have a lot of commercial development and investment and infrastructure and those kinds of things. So whoever sits in the District Four position is going to have to also be part of that discussion of how we look at some not-so-fortunate parts of Leon County. Starting with you, Brian Welch, what ideas do you have, again, realizing you'd be representing that very specific District Four? But how would you tie into that larger conversation of trying to address the incredible income and development inequality that we have in this county?
Yeah. You know, I've said repeatedly, I think that when we, when we commit to investing millions upon millions, I mean, I think Walani Boulevard is $47 million with another potentially $40 million interstate exchange over the course of the next 15 or 20 years with blueprint dollars. I think that we, by doing that, we sort of neglect the other infrastructure needs and elements of economic development in other parts of the community. So again, northeast Tallahassee is in a unique situation where you have a lot of developmental pressure and citizens don't really want it. And then you have a lot of expenditure of public dollars in areas where people don't really need it. And so I think you've got a bit of a double negative there potentially. I think northeast Tallahassee, people kind of exclude northeast Tallahassee and assume that we don't have a dog in the fight when it comes to broader community issues, and that is just not true. I think that's because we don't have a seat at the table. And so when you look at the broader elements in the community with economic and educational segregation, northeast Tallahassee has a crucial role to play in fixing those problems. And it starts with having a seat at the table and acknowledging that our, even though northeast Tallahassee kind of exists in an insular bubble, we have a responsibility to ensure that the rest of the community thrives and the rest of the community is successful. And so that just starts with having a seat at the table, investing in those communities, making sure that we are being smart with our development dollars, with our blueprint dollars. We've got to, economic development is going to be the number one way with which you can improve somebody's situation. As a high school teacher, I work with young people every day, teenagers. That's a very difficult time in their lives. Parents and adults often forget what it's like to be 14 and 15, and the pressures that they have to exist in now with social media and all the exposures that they get. It's a very treacherous situation to be a teenager these days. And now you add in poverty, you add in single-family homes, you add in poor educational experiences, and all of that contributes to problems we have seen all across our community, whether it's crime, educational inequality, lack of kids participating in school activities. And so it's a complicated situation. I think northeast Tallahassee has a role to play in that, in the solution to those problems. But it starts with prioritizing how we spend our taxpaying dollars. We can't just put Band-Aids on every issue by building infrastructure in communities that don't necessarily need it. We have to meet people where they are. We have to, excuse me, we have to engage with the nonprofit community, and we have to, we have to have some empathy for young people. We have to have our finger on the pulse of what causes problems in people's lives, and do our best to meet them where they are and help them get over the hump that's keeping them from success.
I recall a certain county commission meeting not all that long ago when a statement, I won't tell you by whom, but was uttered, that said essentially, the problems in the South City area and the 32304 area code were not exclusively the purview of Commissioners Jackson and Proctor. Mr. Deloge, what do you do as you look ahead to how we get more equanimity here in those areas?
Tom, that's a great question. So you're right. Although I represent the northeast side of Leon County, when I vote, I vote for the entire county. And let's start with blueprint. The projects that are on blueprint were approved by the citizens of our community, and there's a list that was on the referendum. So we made a deal with the citizens of this community, and I'd like to fulfill that deal. So things like the northeast park and the northeast gateway, and a lot of the projects that have been listed, we need to make sure that we give the citizens what they voted for overwhelmingly. As far as the South side goes, I think it's no secret that 32304 is the highest poverty rate in the state of Flor- Florida by zip code, which is the west side of town. I've got a seat at the table. I actually had a meeting yesterday with Sue Dick, who's the president of the chamber, our sheriff Walt McNeil, Reverend R.B. Holmes, and Skip Foster, who used to be the publisher of the Democrat. And the whole topic was, for an hour or so, was what can we do? Let's quit talking about it, and let's figure out what's out there that we can start to move forward. And what became painfully obvious was, we've got this mishmash of programs and issues and things that people are working on, and nobody quite understands. And I'll give you an example. So we, the things that we took away was, how do we inventory the job creators in our community? And not just jobs in the South side. I've mentioned Walani earlier. 600 people are showing up every day to work there. And not every one of those people lives in the northeast side of town. A large number of those tradespeople probably are coming from the South side. So we need to make sure that that pipeline of jobs continues. We also need to look at what are the other ways that are out there. We just got a $10 million grant from the federal government. Wilbur Ross was here this last week to build a wet lab out at Innovation Park. Well, that's, you know, 40,000-foot building that's going to create 600 jobs is the estimate. So you look at that and say, how do, how do So you look at that and say, how do, how do we inventory all the job creators that we've got out there? And make sure everybody knows what each other are doing. The Civic Center, the convention center that we talked about in Blueprint the other day has $100 million a year impact. There are 400 associations in Leon County that cannot have a convention here, and it's probably one of the single biggest producers of economic drivers. Then you gotta look at what are the programs already in place? We've got Purpose Built Communities, which is going on in the South Side of town to try and basically ramp up not only the neighborhoods but the schools. Frankly, I'm not up to speed on where it is right now. So Sean DeKnight was in the meeting with us as well from the sheriff's office, so she's on that board. You know, what about, we've got two or three housing initiatives to basically go in and redo some of the subsidized housing on the South Side. Where is that right now? What's going on with it? So as a community, I think we need to do a better job of pulling all the resources together and make sure all the people who are in levels of leadership are talking to each other. We are making some differences, but frankly, having the highest poverty level in the state is unacceptable. No matter how you try and explain it away, it's a problem, and we need to deal with it.
At the outset of the show, we mentioned the Proposed Children's Services Council also on the ballot with you guys coming up on November 3rd. Brian Deloge, your thoughts on that council? Like it? Don't like it? How come?
So I like, I will vote for it. I will tell you, I had a lot of hesitation, and I'll give you a little bit of history. I flew to Miami on my time and money to go meet with David Lawrence about three years ago. David Lawrence, if you don't know, is the kind of the grandfather of these type children's services councils, and he runs the one in Dade County and has, he was the publisher of the Miami Herald. His sister lives here in town. And so I sat down with him and said, you know, how does it work? What does it look like? Walk me through the nuances. I know commissioners in Palm Beach and in Broward that are on the board of these, so I've kind of picked their brain, talked to the executive director. There's seven in the state of Florida as we sit right now. You know, I was the one when this brought up, first brought up two years ago, or last year, I guess, and they said, let's just go ahead and put it on the ballot now. And I said, we need to have a little bit more work done on this. And so the committee was put in place that Judge Scherstrom chaired, which he did a spectacular job of herding cats, a lot of people in the community, to come together and say, what exactly do you plan to do? What exactly do you hope to accomplish with this? And I'm still a little nervous about setting up an entirely new organization with taxing authority, but if it can help the children in our community, which I'm confident it will, I plan to support it.
Okay, Brian Welch, your thoughts on the proposal?
I support. The Children's Services Council have, since I first read their white paper and learned everything about it, yeah, I am hesitant for a new tax, but it's a referendum. It's not like any individual entity or board is passing a tax down to anybody. It's an opportunity for the citizens in Tallahassee to vote on whether or not they want to extend that tax. And I just think that when it comes to taxpayer money, if we have really, really smart targeted investments, you can have tremendous, tremendous outcomes. And so when I read the Children's Services Council white paper, I see it as an effective tool to try and fix some of the problems that run cross-sections across Leon County, whether it be economic segregation, whether it be early childhood education, a crime. You know, the Children's Services Council dollars, if applied correctly and managed appropriately, should have a tremendous impact on outcomes for young people. As a school teacher, again, I work every day with young people. I think we all can acknowledge that that early childhood education, investments in that stuff pay huge dividends, not just, not just in your crime rates or your poverty rates, but economically. I think it's a lot of bang for the buck. Yes, I'm hesitant about a tax, but I think it's a vote. I like the idea of a referendum. I like the idea of letting citizens be as engaged as possible in every process that our government engages in. And so I think the Children's Services Council on paper looks really good. I think it'll be a success. I will be voting for it. I think that, you know, it's, the management structure has been, there's been communication about the management structure and a appointed board administering tax dollars. I think that the appointees that will have to be on, the superintendent of schools, a county commissioner, a city commissioner, the governor appoints, I think, four people to the board. I would like to think that that's enough layers of oversight to manage those dollars effectively. I think it's about $8 million is the annual realization of the tax. So if applied correctly, the Children's Services Council should have tremendous impacts on outcomes. However, just like with Blueprint, we have to make sure that it's managed appropriately and that those, whatever we target in terms of services have to be appropriate, and they have to be targeted, and they have to be correct, they have to be the right thing. We can't just squander that money or allow people to serve some kind of special interest with it.
As a high school teacher, Brian, have you picked up any scuttlebutt from the kids that you interface with, their child, as far as their reaction to the current curfew and the idea of minimizing the number of people who can gather in things like convenience store parking lots? What are the kids saying?
Yeah, our kids don't really, I don't think they really are concerned about that. They really should not, high school kids should not be out at those hours anyway, especially not in Northeast Tallahassee. So I don't necessarily think that the curfew is really targeted at them, and I don't think it really impacts them. Most of the parents in Northeast Tallahassee are pretty responsible and keep a pretty good eye on their kids. Now, you know, we've had several unfortunate incidents. We had a car accident out here ironically near the Northeast Park property on Proctor and Child's, I mean, on Thomasville and Proctor roads on Saturday night. And so, you know, child's kids are just like any other kids. They make mistakes and they do things from time to time, but I don't think the bigger issues of the county curfew are really targeted at them, and I don't, they don't, they don't care, man. They don't really know what's going on with that kind of stuff. They don't know about the local politics and stuff.
Okay. Brian Deloge, that curfew was your jam here, so how do you see that playing out as we move down the road?
Well, let's start by say the curfew is no longer in place today. Okay, it lasted a week after we had an incident where the gentleman was waving a gun. And the sheriff came to me after that and formally approached me and said, I'd like to go ahead and put a curfew in place. The city had been asking for it for quite a while. There were a number of commissioners that felt like the pop-up parties in downtown Tallahassee were becoming a problem. But the sheriff and the chief both saw from intelligence they had that there was gonna be an escalation. The protesters made, had some comments relative behind the scenes to let's raise the bar. The anti-protesters, the same thing, which is the worst nightmare for us as a community. So in an abundance of caution, the sheriff contacted me and said, would you be willing to do it? So we enacted a curfew for a week over the Labor Day weekend. We, obviously, we had some arrests downtown, people that broke the law, but nobody got hurt, no businesses got damaged. I was real proud of that. And, you know, the arrests were for moving violations or resisting arrest. And so, and when you talk about, I lose my train of thought here, so the curfew and then, oh, and the other side was limiting the size of the people. Well, that's, we don't have anything in place in the county today. The city brought up an issue the other night, and I'm pretty certain it went through, and it's after midnight and before 5:00 a.m., no more than 10 people gathering in a place, unless it's a church, or it's a restaurant, or it's a place of business. And it's solely to try and tamp down. We've got these pop-up parties that are occurring mostly in downtown Tallahassee where you have 200, 300, 400 people that show up after either the bars close and restaurants close. And, you know, unfortunately, about six or eight weeks ago, we had a couple of shootings over one weekend, and we had a couple of deaths, in most cases, you know, that's drug dealing or things that shouldn't be going on in the middle of the night. So this gives the police, Tallahassee Police Department, a little bit of authority to walk in and disperse those type of things. So that's not a county-driven initiative, and it does not impact anybody in the county proper. But in the city, 10 or more outside in a public setting, unless you have, you know, like I said, a restaurant, a bar, church, or an exclusion, so.
Of course, as we get closer to the election, which lord knows what's gonna happen there, we have seen some ramifications in some other parts of the country, not so much here, but if we have a continuing racial divide or any number of other situations in the midst of a pandemic, I mean, this cascade of confluences that we're dealing with here, and then Governor DeSantis proposing the legislature take up perhaps as early as a November special session, if that happens, a kind of crackdown on out-of-control gatherings and demonstrations and protests and all that. Does that all play into, again, a potentially ever escalating situation when it comes to what goes on on our streets? Do you see that going first? Mr. Deloge, your thoughts?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. I mean, I read the governor's comments, and obviously, he's thrown an idea out that's gonna have to go in front of the legislature, and then it's gonna have to pass, so it's not anything that's gonna happen in the next couple of months. You mentioned earlier, though, we certainly have the opportunity or the potential for real problems around the election, regardless of where it finishes, but there's some states out there that have got issues about whether, when they're gonna be able to actually qualify their election, and if there are a lot of mail-in ballots that haven't gotten back that have a postmark, and you've seen all the news on that. That will probably throw a lot of questions that will then escalate this a little bit. I think the governor's right. I think we live in a law and order society to a degree, and I think the rules are, if you play by the rules, you're fine, and if you step outside, then, you know, it doesn't mean somebody should get hurt, but, you know, we can't have businesses being damaged, we can't have people being shot at. You know, I think most of us live in a community where we want to feel safe when we go out at night. And I, I don't know what it will look like when the legislature finishes with it, so it's a little early to speculate on how that will impact us locally, but I think in theory and in concept, what the governor's proposing is not a bad idea.
Mr. Welch, you have any fear of a perfect storm along these lines, or what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, it's concerning. I think we've all seen that our political rhetoric from the national level especially has gotten particularly toxic. I despise that level of discourse. I, I don't like the name-calling and the belittling and all that stuff and this, the hyper-partisan nature of politics now. And then certainly in this environment where we have, you know, controversial issues going on with Black Lives Matter and police brutality and shootings and things like that. You know, I've been endorsed by the Big Ben PBA proudly. I support our police officers. I agree that they have a tough job to do. I think we need to support them in doing that job. We need to help our police officers get better. I think if you want to protest, you absolutely have a right to do that, and our police officers need to help you do that, when you protect your right to protest. But at the end of the day, we have to come together as a community and recognize that the incendiary nature of the rhetoric coming from the highest levels of government and politics is not gonna benefit anyone. It's not gonna solve problems. Rioting and confrontations and violence are not going to solve the problems. It's gonna take acknowledging that we have problems and then sitting down and trying to, trying to figure out solutions. We have to be solution-oriented. And unfortunately, we just live in a time where everybody exists in an echo chamber of their own political partisanship, and their social media sort of reflects that. And so it's just an unfortunate sign of our times. I think we have to get back to pragmatic, reasonable leaders. I think it's important to say that when somebody says something that's insulting or demeaning or, or sort of belittle or demeans the, or reduces the political discourse, that we have to do a better job of saying, that's not right, we're not gonna do that, we're gonna be respectful, and we're gonna demand better from our leadership, and we're gonna demand better from each other. And I think that that's easier said than done, obviously, but again, we have to find balance. We have to support the police department, we have to help them be as good as they can be, and we have to support people's right to protest and just kind of encourage everybody to be respectful.
Brian Welch, you get to November 3rd and you wake up the next morning, I'm not sure how long it's gonna take. We, we knew what was going on by nine o'clock during the primary. Mark Early did such a great job. But anyway, as the evening comes on, suddenly you go, oh my God, I won. You get on the fifth floor of the courthouse, you get into that, that office, and what's the first thing you do?
Well, Tom, you know, the first thing I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go around and I'm gonna visit with every department within the county government, I'm gonna meet with every department head within the county government, I'm gonna go meet with all the rank-and-file employees within the county government, and I'm gonna learn absolutely as much as I can about the processes, about the people, how we can be better. So essentially, I'm gonna be learning. I'm gonna spend a lot of time learning, I'm going to explore as much as I can about the system, about the, how we can make it better. And then I'm gonna try and build relationships with my colleagues, because as I've mentioned, I have, I have goals and I have, I have things I want to get done, particularly the Northeast Park, which we, we did talk about earlier, which is, I think it's an $18 million blueprint project scheduled to be done in 2035. I would certainly like to accelerate that. Now, that may be incorrect, but last time I was told that's what it was, and I spoke to somebody who I think would know. So, you know, I have an agenda. I want to serve the people of Northeast Tallahassee. I want to be as good at that as I possibly can, so I'm gonna invest a lot of time in learning the ropes and trying to figure out how I can do that, because at the end of the day, I just want to give the people in my community the best representation they can get, and that's gonna involve me being as invested, engaged, and accountable to them as possible.
Conversely, we hit the November 3rd wormhole, we come out the other side, and Brian Deloge has another term. So what would be your priorities amongst all the things that you have already mentioned today, Brian? What, what would you give the A number one listing to as you return to that office?
So you modulate it a little bit, but I think the question is, what's my number one goal, or what do I hope to accomplish when I come back in? You know, we had, last year, we had $1 billion in economic impact relative to the tourism industry in Tallahassee in Leon County, which is astounding considering we're not exactly Las Vegas or Miami. But I see Leon County as a real place for people to come and work and to visit, which benefits everybody. So we've got 700 miles of trails in our community. Most people don't know where they are. Most people don't know how to get to them. We need to do a better job of making sure they're connected. We need to make sure the neighborhoods are all connected. So I've been working with the planning staff for the last five or six years, trying to figure out where are the gaps, what are we missing? For instance, we talked about in our CRTPA meeting, which is the Transportation Authority the other day, trails that will run down Highway 90 all the way to Monticello. We're making arrangements to maybe have trails that will go as far as Havana. And you want to be able, people move to a community like Tallahassee because it's the kind of lifestyle that they like. And with what's gone on for the last nine months, you find people are leaving the big urban areas, and Tallahassee has become a real destination. And we find as a drive market, not only for vacations, but for relocations. I talked to a real estate agent earlier today, Steve Listowski, and he said, the real estate market for residential real estate is on fire, and it's, people want to move here. We are in an environment that's, you know, safe, that's got some culture, it's got some good features to it, and it's a low-tax state. We're a little, and a great healthcare system, and we're in a good place. So I want to continue to bolster the community from a standpoint of the outdoors and specifically the trail system, because it's really where my heart is.
All right. Folks, we only have a few minutes left, so why don't I give each of you like two minutes to kind of make the elevator pitch? It's a slow elevator from the plaza of the courthouse to the fifth floor. So starting with you, Brian Welch, two minutes here, sir, make your best case why Mr. Deloge should go into retirement after November 3rd.
Well, Tom, first of all, again, let me say thank you for having me. I've really appreciated the opportunity to be on your show. I would ask the voters of Northeast Leon County, you know, again, Mr. Deloge is, I don't think Mr. Deloge is a bad man. I think he's committed his heart to the community for a long time, and I'd like to send him off into retirement. I'd like to give him an opportunity to ride his bicycle on all those trails he wants to say he built. And, you know, I think it's an opportunity for a fresh start for Northeast Tallahassee, somebody who's got a little bit more, my children are in the schools, and, and I live in the community, I work in the community, I teach in the community. So, you know, I want to bring an advocate to our neighborhoods, I want to make our neighborhoods the priority, I want to help balance the growth that we're gonna experience over the next 15 to 20 years. I don't anticipate being a county commissioner if I'm elected for 14 years, no offense, Commissioner Deloge. So I think that it's natural to have some cyclical, a cyclical nature in the terms of public service. It's really not about ourselves, it's about serving the larger community. And so I think it's a commitment, and it's a commitment of the heart, and I think it's just time to turn the page and move into the next stage. If I were to win, I'd love to have Mr. Deloge's help with moving things forward and kind of give him a break. You know, I think the folks in Northeast Tallahassee really want some change. I think it's fair to ask for change. I think it's fair to have a referendum on your leadership. And I think it's time that, that we had somebody who's gonna really, really fight for our community, fight for our neighborhoods, give everybody a chance to be heard and to sit at the table. And listen, when we say we want to, we want to control out-of-control development, we wanna, we want to meter out-of-control development, that doesn't mean we don't want development. We want to have a balance. That helps everybody. If we help developers be better, then it creates less problems for them with neighborhoods. And so it's the balance, it's about change, it's about a renewal, and I certainly would appreciate everybody, everybody's support. You know, I'm obviously an underdog, and so first-time candidate, this is not my, my normal thing. I just consider myself a regular person, and I throw my hat in the ring, and I've had a little bit of success, and I certainly And I certainly like to, to encourage everybody to support me on November 3rd, and, and we can help move our community forward together.
Thank you, sir. And Brian Deloge, two minutes, why you have not yet approached the finish line of that trail yet.
Thanks. You know, I, I'm doing this out of love for the community, and I will tell you, you know, having been born here, having been raised here, all my children have come through here. This is my way to give back. And I applaud Brian for running for office. We need more people like him willing to step up and throw their name in the hat. Frankly, you know, it's a, there are not enough people that are willing to run for public office. I will tell you, however, though, in light of where we are right now, I think we're in awfully trying times, and I think what's going to happen for the foreseeable future is, somebody that's got the experience, well, from a business standpoint, from a government standpoint, from a relationship standpoint, will stand heads and shoulders above anybody who has to learn when they first get here. So, you know, part of what I'd like to do is take, bring us out of this chaos and get us back on a positive track. And it's going to take a lot of finesse and a lot of talent. I will tell you that we have one of the best county administrations in the country, and I say that with all sincerity, having been to just about, I have been to every state in the country and I've been to most of the counties in Florida. We've got top-notch people, and I will tell you, we get calls from all over the country, how'd you do this? How'd you do this? You know, we've got $51 million of care money we're trying to work through to help the citizens of Leon County, and we are looked at as the model for many of the counties around the country as to how we're doing this. So I, I am, am fully engaged, and I love this community, and frankly, for me, it is a labor of love. This was never a career path for me. I'm a business guy who kind of got lost along the way, and I, I'm frankly, this is what I do because I love it, and I love the work, and I'd love to continue. So I'd love your support on November 3rd, and that's it. Thanks so much.
The incumbent, Brian Deloge, the challenger, Brian Welch. Gentlemen, good luck to you both. Thank you for being on this edition of Political Perspectives.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Perspectives produced by WFSU Public Media in Tallahassee.